Welcome to the Transportation Commission's study meeting. This work session provides an opportunity for the Transportation Commission to discuss items in greater detail. As a general practice, the Commission will not make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Public comment related to the work session topics will be allowed at the end of the discussion on each item. And I'm going to turn it over to Jessica to discuss bicycle and pedestrian prioritization criteria. Do we want to --
Hello, I'm Mr. Southern. Might mention just for the Commission's information, we are taking video of the meetings from now on in order to keep track of minutes and it will be posted just like the City Commission minutes and stuff like that, so just an informational thing for you.
Okay.
So you're the starter?
Do we want to go around the room and introduce?
Yes, go ahead.
Chris Storm, Vice Chair. Transportation Commission?
Micah Siebel, GIS Coordinator.
Justin Martin, your Senior Transportation Planner.
Chad Solz, Public Works Director.
Zach Baker, Project Engineer.
David Hanby, Commission Member.
Mark Hurd, Commission. Do you have second, Commissioner?
And maybe, Commissioner?
The other thing I might mention is, because this is being recorded, make sure you speak up clearly and into the mics. You're welcome.
And Mick Voss, Public Works. And Charlie is on as Speaker. Charlie Bryan.
So this is the second time you've seen some of this. You'll notice we added a little, some notation at the beginning in that, and then we've provided you the next, kind of the first look at rating some different projects, both for bike and ped under this criteria. We, I will note, we received two, three correspondents, two from Mike and one from Sustainability Action, Michael Allman, in the packet, so we can discuss those as we discuss the different criteria and some of the metrics that we have put together for you today. And we'd be happy still to entertain conversation and discussion as we build this process that we've never used before to prioritize the spending of bicycle and pedestrian funding. So I, we can walk through the noted changes if we want. We can look at the tables and priorities. We can discuss any of the comments we received. Does anybody have any preference about how we do that?
I just want to point out that this is just a prioritization schedule, and it's still the intent is that Transportation Commission would then take and pick and choose projects. It's not, oh, the top five, boom, let's go. So as we discuss this, that's my intent, is that we'll still pick and choose and select, yes, and we'll, I mean, the criteria is only as good as the information that's available, but we'll still have the final say on what projects, as far as this Commission, I believe it goes to City Commission, but we'll have the final say with this group on which projects actually get chosen.
And that language on, in that paragraph too, intends to represent that idea, David? So if you don't think that language is strong enough, or it doesn't say the right, exactly what you want it to say, we can also amend that?
No, I just wanted to voice that because that's something that, you know, I think some of these correspondence indicated to me anyway that, you know, we're not, we're just, this is a tool, and we'll use it, but it's not, okay, there's only top three, we only have projects for top three, let's go with those, so.
Yeah, certain projects may jump ahead of others just because we get other grants on it. We may be eligible for certain grants, so that would be one criteria that might supersede just the straight prioritization scoring.
Right.
I mean, if you were changing her, but you're just, I think the only thing is, rather than say it's selecting and ranking.
Okay.
Or something like that.
Like ranking instead of selection?
Yeah, it makes it a little clearer, you know, just because it's on the top there doesn't mean it's selected.
Sure, okay.
I guess there's another example of something like move another project out of sequence and scoring might be if we're working in area and we can seize an economy by adding a certain project onto that project, so.
Or even the cost, first, of part of the job here. Yeah, you're going to have to do some retaining costs for that. So maybe you'll choose that, maybe the next one down is really beautiful.
Did you want to look through the project list? Do you want to talk about the comments in detail? Mike's here, you could, we could open the floor to him to invite him to share some additional detail.
Do you want to basically just basically?
Go through them again?
Go through this because obviously the people that may watch this and some people have.
Sure, if you haven't seen our previous meeting, sure. So the pedestrian prioritization is based on three criteria factors, basically that come out of the idea of priorities that came out of the Bicycle Pedestrian Issues Task Force work, which is the idea that we start to improve connectivity along priority networks. So that would either be the priority network in the Regional Pedestrian Plan or in the Bike Ped Issues Task Force Report, which is safe routes to schools, arterial and collector streets with no sidewalks, arterial and then collector and then local streets as in the prioritization. Then pedestrian access to priority destinations. In this one, we have created a list of priority destinations and some buffers around those and kind of grown in intensity, some of the scoring to destinations we feel should have the highest priority. And then there's the safety criteria, and there's a couple, there's three different parts to this. One is if it has a crash history based on the KDOT accident report forms that we get back from KDOT, so if there's proximity to crash history for bike ped, for pedestrian crashes. And then roadway volume, with that really dealing with a little bit more of the perception issue of safety, in the sense that roads that are perceived to have higher volume would weigh more heavily to ensure that they have gaps filled of pedestrian infrastructure. And then the last one we have on here, and this is, will probably, it's not included in today's current score matrix, because it really is more contingent on what design is ultimately chosen and what the project scope ends up being, and so that's something that, it looks like as of now that maybe it's not something we can actually add in the model. It has to be kind of weighted later, and it would be something you'd want to consider in project design, is kind of street crossings, and if the crossing, it makes, if the project would make a crossing improvement in any of those areas. But the way that the projects are presented is gap, missing gaps on the sidewalk network, so it makes it a little challenging to know if you're going to design a crossing when you are doing gaps, and there might also be other crossings you want to do that wouldn't be necessarily included. We included it on here originally because in the KDOT Transportation Alternatives Program, they give points in their grant matrix for crossing improvements over high-volume roadways, so, but it's something that maybe we need to consider removing because it really just gets decided later in project design, if there's going to be that element. There's no way to know that whatever, if just by prioritizing ranking a corridor, to know what you're going to design, you know, it's going to be designed there and scoped for that area.
So like, for instance, in the last Monday night, there was a request for crossing slash traffic calming on Louisiana Street. So we ended up doing a crossing. You're saying that that wouldn't show up in, like, I'm just trying to think of a road, Castle Drive, that doesn't have any crossings from 23rd to 15th Street. How do you put that in here?
So it's what you --
Is that what you're kind of talking about?
Yeah, so right now, if you look on what we're showing on the screen, we basically, this is just a GIS version of the map, that was, that's included in your packet. But basically, with the criteria ranked, what we fed into the model was the line segments of missing sidewalk on safe routes to schools, on collectors, and arterials. And so those are scored. Nowhere in there, because the line file we fed in, doesn't have proposed crossings. So at some point, you would have to, well, there's two options. If you wanted to keep the crossing score, recognize that line segments, if they don't have a, if they don't have a separate crossing proposed that gets fed into the model, then there, you won't allocate any of that three points. And that, I think, goes into the process of what we'll need to talk about in terms as we roll this out. So far, to give you an idea, we had this line file built already, so we used it as a way to kind of propose how the scoring matrix would work. In the future, if you decide to say, we, you know, we recognize there's not enough money to even fund what we have for sidewalk gaps here, but if you would want to add other projects to be considered, whether the Commission decides to do that, you let the public, is there a certain time period when you're ranking and selecting projects that you let, like the capital improvement planning process, where you basically let the public, you could let the public or other members or other plans propose other crossing improvements that also then could be weighted and ran through the model to be ranked. But at this point in time, we don't have any crossing segments, so there's no points allocated for crossing improvements. Although any of these corridor projects, like for example, you could do a project somewhere, and you could also do a crossing, but we wouldn't know that on the backend when we're ranking. We would know that later after it was selected and maybe it was designed that way. Does that make sense? There's a bunch of different kind of things to think about in terms of how that might And part of it's, I don't know how, we're working on developing this process, so part of it's going to be the determination of how we evolve that process, in the sense that, you know, we want to create something that's replicatable and that you can do as you want to recommend projects for capital funding. And I don't know what the timeline is for that in terms of what we, what you envision as a Commission that process being. Do you want, do you want projects to have to be identified in previous plans? Do you want the public then to be able to add requests and have them scored and ranked? Do you want, you know, it's like, what do you want to actually be fed? One, there's the, here's what the model's going to prioritize, but what do you want to be fed into the model in terms of segments or choices? Right now, we just have corridors.
Or who does this list go to?
Well, you, the Transportation Commission.
For the public comment, is this, is intended to be just out there for the public to look at any time, or?
Well, I would --
Is it generated every year, or?
Well, I think that depends on what the process is. I, how many years are you identifying? So if you would, for example, if you would take this process, you would rank whatever, you choose what your input's going to be, however you're going to identify that. The Commission, then are you identifying projects for one year or three years, or?
So right now, right now, we've got a five-year capital improvement program, so what we probably intend on doing is taking whatever the Transportation Commission's recommendations for the top five years of projects to the City Commission in that CIP process for approval. And so that will be put in that. Doesn't mean that the project in year five doesn't get moved or shuffled, but definitely the next, next year and probably the second year are pretty fun. I guess I do have a couple of questions, and maybe for Jessica, maybe for the committee to consider. And it kind of goes to what, a little bit what Chris was saying, so you, the Commission gets requests sometimes for traffic calming, pedestrian crossings, irrespective of this. Are those, after you say, yeah, it's warranted, or make the recommendation that it's approved, then do those get put on these lists? You know, so if it's a pedestrian crossing, I need a pedestrian crossing because my kid has to go to school, I've got one right now at six and fulls, and, and they want crossing guard, does that funnel into this and get scored, or is that a separate issue?
Yeah, is this a live list that's constantly updated?
For our traffic, for like traffic calming projects, we've got the list. Somebody brings in a new project, the Commission, you know, reviews it, makes recommendation to approve it, the Commission approves it, we score it, it goes into that list, it could, it could knock, you know, the top five out and go right to the top, or it could be number five. So I guess as a question, you know, two guys will have to be signed at some point. Then I did have just a couple of comments, and I, you guys may have already discussed some of this, and these, I know these are just examples in here, as far as neighborhood and community retail, but I think Mr. Kelly brings in some good ideas with medical facilities and community facilities, and maybe that's just because these are the examples you, we used in the text, but I don't know that, I think, that's just my opinion. Medical and community facilities, whether it's City Hall or the county, something like that could be also added to this and given, maybe it falls in within the community and neighborhood retail.
We did discuss that at the last meeting of adding that, and I guess the question is, do you guys have identified GIS where you can do that?
What is?
We know, we know some of these areas.
What's that?
Couldn't do it quickly?
You couldn't do it quickly?
Yeah. For this process. We have generically areas that are commercial. I have like hospitals and I think just the hospitals in north and south. Identified health, as far as pharmacies, those are not specifically identified. We do have the 911 dispatch list where I could query it out by the name of the business like pharmacy, but yeah.
Well, I wasn't going as bad detail. I wasn't going pharmacies and everybody who's medical doctors, but the main community ones, the hospital, you know, post office, I think I saw that again, and it's in those bigger community.
The hospital's one, but I guess I'd like to look at even senior facilities, you know, care homes, or, you know, something where you have senior citizens walking around, or people that aren't able to get out very often. I mean, and, and we got some of that feedback out of the last meeting, you know, you typically have medical facilities that are grouped together, you know, I think 18th Street, you know, we're off Alcarusa or whatever, but maybe groups of medical facilities, or even dentists, you know, that type of thing, but pharmacies, where people have a need to be there, I think I picked that up from some of that correspondence, you have a, a need for somebody to go there and do business where they can't just, you know, order something online, they have to get to that business itself, so.
So I guess the question for all that is, is this a matter of?
It's just, yeah, take your time to kind of try to get those businesses lined up?
So it just depends about, this was, you know, the question about timing and processes, like, do we start with something, do we have some data? My assumption is that a lot of those places are in for like some of these other things that we've already called to attention, but I'm sure that they could add some weight to, so.
Other questions, how soon would we be used in this list? When will we be starting? When will we, don't get me mixed up?
Well, this is a draft now, after you guys vet it and decide on how you could well ask to recommend or update it to a member, and then after.
You mean the actual projects, like if they use this list to select projects, that goes to the City Commission, or do you think even this goes, this?
I think the prioritization policy will be commissioned.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking.
Yes, they'll adapt, they've adapted the traffic calming prioritization scoring matrix. So they'll adapt this, and then you guys can use it, and we'll put it into effect, basically with our 2018 CIP budget program.
Next spring, maybe looking at projects for that 2018 cycle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we've got money right now, it's not, again, by putting this project, so if this was approved, put through everybody, we could start using it. But as far as the next budget cycle, it's in February of 2019, this is 2018.
Hey, there's, can be an honest question, but what do you gain by having the Commission after this formal process?
Well, you have, you gain a public process. So like, if you desire the public, like traffic calming, to be able to request it, and then you set up the precedent for how people request projects and how they get them added to the list, first off, then you also set it as policy to let them know, this is how you're going to be scoring projects to rank in the future as policy. It's an additional opportunity also for the public to comment on the process that you're creating before you start saying, here's the projects we're prioritizing.
The only thing is you lose the ability to be nimble with it.
Oh, not if your policy has these other, I mean.
There can be, there can be maybe regularly added that to make, to give some mobility?
Yeah.
Mobility, agility. But I think, you know, the Commission has asked for our prioritization matrix, so that they know that they're making, putting and approving the right projects in the CIP, so.
So the net, so they've added.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, when we get to that point, you know, that point that this evolves into something that we develop as a policy, you know, like when we write it to be presented as a policy as opposed to just prioritization, then I anticipate we'll add some, if you're moving to the direction where you want public to be able to request something on the list, then we would match the language in traffic calming to, you know, to some of that, where how that request process would work, or we detail some of the timeline anticipations.
Yeah, you know, to the building part, this is, this is one tool. This is, you know, there's been a lot of opinions that will go into this. It's, it's meant to try and make this more prescriptive versus opinionated, but there still would be a lot of choices that people are going to make.
Okay, so that's the pedestrian one. Mike Kelly had comments specifically about that. Would you like, we like, could open the floor to him and let him share some of his comments in a reasonable fashion, and then we can discuss any of those in more detail, and kind of, if you want to respond with some feedback in terms of where you think staff, want to help staff develop this in regard to that.
Thank you, Jessica. My name is Mike Kelly. I've lived in Lawrence since 2009, and I live out on the far west side, adjacent to Devictor Park. I was a member of the Pedestrian Bicycle Issues Task Force, and I just want to emphasize that I'm not speaking for the task force. I may refer to my experience there, but that's my opinion and my recollection. The only thing that is factual is I took a verbatim quote, which is the very last page back of your package, and I want to point out one thing that didn't make it through the software translation, that little Mickey Mouse ear symbol there, or whatever it is, emoji, that's supposed to be the numeral one, which is the top, the number one priority. And so this is the exact text with that one change of the first part of the pedestrian priorities. And I want to call your attention to the last line above the footnote, which says, "The estimated cost of all that stuff is $2.8 million." So just within this top priority, is top priority as the PBITF determined within pedestrian, because we had a separate priority list for bicycle. You've got $2.8 million worth of need, according to the, and I call it an engineering estimate. The engineers would probably say it's not an engineering level estimate. Charlie wants to say something, I bet.
Mark, Charlie.
Okay, okay. So with that in, with that in mind, your budget that you're projected to have for the next few years, I think, is $450,000, $450,000, and then ramping up toward $1 million a year. Is that, is that my understanding? Is that kind of the budget horizon?
Yeah.
$450, $450, and then it ramps up to a million a year, somewhere downstream?
If you want to start, start focusing.
Well, right, right, yeah, okay, yes, I'm, that's a very important caveat. So what I think, what that says to me, in my opinion, is you could work everything that you allocate to pedestrian on safe routes to school, and you'd be working on the top priority as identified by the task force. Now, clearly, issues will emerge, pedestrian gets hit in a crosswalk and it's a fatality, and you, and you find out, oh, that intersection has got design deficiencies. Well, certainly, this body and the City Commission can direct, or can, you guys can recommend to the City Commission, the City Commission can direct. We need to, you know, stop our other project budget plans and put money on fixing that one where the fatality occurred. So to me, the, the two priorities that jump out are whether it is a design deficiency that contributed to a fatality and safe routes to school. Safe routes to school, it's a primary function of government to educate our children. The children have to be physically present. There are virtual schools and there are home schools, but the normal mode is the children have to be physically present. So the transportation of them to school is something we need to be, be paying attention to. Furthermore, it's healthier for the kids to walk or ride their bikes, so we want to encourage that. So I'm completely comfortable, even a year and a half later, saying that the, the top priority ought to be, for pedestrian issues, ought to be, safe routes to school. Now, I took the liberty of driving last night, and we've got the map up here, the GIS map. I want you to look in north Lawrence there, and you'll see a red, red line, no, the red line, yeah, it goes right over AT&amp;SF, but that's not AT&amp;SF, that's actually Union Pacific Track. Yeah, right there, that red line, it says Maple Street just to the left of it. Okay, that's, that's on a safe route to school, and I drove that last night, and the sidewalks there are sketchy on the west side and almost nonexistent on the east side. And there's a railroad crossing, and as was pointed out in the earlier discussion, we don't have any crossing information. So that is, that scored high already. It, to me, it has another priority factor, that it has a railroad crossing, and that is a busy railroad crossing. There's approximately 90 trains per day dispatched across that crossing, which is one every 16 minutes if you take the number of hours in a day and divide it by 90. So that's a, that's a, that's a high priority place to look at. I drove it yesterday, it needs work. Now, if we could go down to Ridge Court and 25th and 26th, that's, that's another one. And I could point these out on your verbal list as well, or the, I'm sorry, the Excel spreadsheet list. Okay, Ridge Court, and we're a little bit south, need to go south. Keep going, keep going. There it is, right there. From 26th to 27th, and this is project number 52 on page six. Ridge Court, 26th Street to 27th Street. There are no sidewalks at all on either side of that street, and that is a safe route to school for Schwagler Elementary. I believe it's also on the safe route to school for South Middle School. So that one, that one needs work. I drove it, drove it last night. It's a, it's a narrow street, no curbs, no sidewalks. There's no parking signage on the east side, and people are permitted to park on the west, west side of the street, and they do. That area has got a, a number of apartment buildings, you can see them there just to the west and to the southwest of the line segment, and those are not what I would call luxury apartments. I would say that probably those people living in those apartments are median income and below. So if you're, want to factor in the social justice factors, I think that that is an underserved, or a population that doesn't have great economic means to deal with the problems that life presents them. Now, I don't know how much it would cost to, to put the sidewalks there, but that would eat a substantial fraction of the $450,000. So I guess my next, my next comment would be something that this body needs to decide at the onset, I would recommend, is if we only have $450,000, how do we want to notionally divide that up? And I just, in my brain, I just said 40% bicycle, 40% pedestrian, and 20% ADA ramps. And the ADA ramps -- And the ADA ramps, I learned is, were required, uh, to improve our ADA ramps, and I believe there's a 1993 policy or something like that. And this commission may have already looked at that policy, but I think it would be very bad optics if the, if the city ever got sued on an ADA thing if we didn't put something into ADA ramps every year, at least one, one ramp, at least one. I don't ever think the ADA should be zero. So my recommendation would be that your top three priorities would be some contribution to ADA, safe routes to school, and then if a fatality occurs and investigation shows it was a design deficiency in the intersection or the crosswalk or whatever the infrastructure deficiency was, that, that would go up at the top. And I'm very big on safety, um, but I also know that there's some, some accidents and fatalities are not caused by infrastructure or there's no contribution of the infrastructure. You can have a bad accident at the best designed crossing. Um, let me go through my notes and see if there's anything else I want to say and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has. Mr. Allman presented some information about bicycle prioritization and I haven't, haven't read that, so I'm, I'm not going to comment on Mr. Allman's efforts except to say that in the PBITF, we didn't find a, a clear rubric to be able to decide between pedestrian and bicycle. So we just split the baby in half and said, you know, half, half a priority, we go to pedestrian and half a priority, we go to bicycle projects. And that's sort of how the, the final report came out. In my professional life, I'm retired now, I worked in helping people at senior levels of government in Washington DC make decisions. We call it decision support. I think the commission should think of this scoring method as a decision support tool, not the decision final word. Cause there's, there's more information that doesn't get captured in the model. And even the best models, even the best maintained models, sometimes don't keep up with the reality on the ground. And those sorts of things are things that are clearly within the transportation commission's purview and the city commission's purview to adjust the priorities when there's clearly uh, some new information that isn't captured by the model or the modeling technique. In decision analysis, when we have many options and we have lists, I don't know how many, if you take these two spreadsheets together, I'm going to say there's over a hundred projects, it's really hard for the human mind to wrap around that many decisions. So what is, what the human mind can wrap around is what we call pairwise comparison. I have project A and project B. And here's, here's, project A scored well, project B scored just below it, here's the rationale for project A, here's the rationale for project B. And then you say, decision maker, staff recommends project A, but over to you. And then, so I think that's how you should look at these scores, is that you should look at the ones that, that float to the top and you should compare the ones that are closely scored to each other and see if there's some non modeled factor, new information or, for example, you know, the railroad crossing in the one project I mentioned in north Lawrence, that's not captured in the model. But clearly to me, that, that crossing hazard adds to the priority of fixing that safe route to school. And so that's, that's the sort of thing that the model doesn't capture right now, that's the sort of thing that you would probably hear in public testimony. And that's probably the sort of thing that should help guide you when you make your recommendation to the city commission about what projects. I do hope that there is some breakout for medical facilities and that there's some breakout for senior citizens facilities. And there are some government facilities, uh, that you need, you know, the courthouse, for example, when you've got a court date, you should show up in court. You, you can send your lawyer if you're, you're rich enough, but it's not a good idea not to show up in court. So there are a number of government facilities where a citizen's physical presence is, um, suggested if, if not required. And so I think the pedestrian access to those sorts of facilities should score as well. Now, this particular scale, and if we could go to the, to the scale, it's the, yeah. Yeah. Next page, yeah, that page right there, the prioritization criteria right now. Okay, there's, um, in the literature that talks about this sort of decision support science, in 1946, there's a psychologist named Stevens that ranked the different types of measurement scales, and I say ranked, he described the different types of measurement scales. And in the top one there, we've just got a categorical, is this a safe route to school? Is this an arterial collector with no sidewalks? Is this an arterial? Is this a collector? Is this local? So it's sort of like animal vegetable mineral. Okay, but you notice that we've placed in this draft, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Now Stevens would call that an interval scale, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, but there's no, um, it, it's completely arbitrary that a safe routes to school gives you 20% more points than an arterial collector. That's completely arbitrary. So I, I have difficulty with using number one at all, except to say that we have $2.8 million of deficiencies on safe routes to school and the projected budget for pedestrian improvements over the next few years doesn't even total up to 2.8 million. So I'd say you'd be pretty safe putting, putting all your recommendations in the safe route to school bucket. Now, that's, that's my personal opinion. Um, you know, commissioners mileage may vary. Number two, uh, once again, we have the, what appears to be an interval scale of 1, 3, and 5, but once again, those are arbitrary. And you can see, if you went from one point to three point, you could change, you know, just by a few feet on how you measure from a certain project to the certain, uh, destination and you could triple the point value. Well, that, that doesn't really make sense. And I provided in my recommendation that you just actually calculate those values to, I don't know, hundreds of a mile or tenths of a mile and just score points based on the distance from. And so obviously a project that goes right to a school or is right on a safe route to school would get the full points and projects that were distant from, from some of the priority destinations would get, um, fewer points. The other thing there, if you look at the top category that scores five points, it says within a quarter mile of school or an eighth of a mile of a transit stop. And I've discussed with Jessica, what's the definition of a transit stop? If you just include a bus stop, that's one definition. I would claim that you need to consider that some people don't have access to a bus and they need to take a taxi or they need to use their own vehicle. And so a transit stop can sometimes be a parking lot near, say, near the courthouse. Also because it's one eighth of a mile and one quarter of a mile in there, the preference that's implied within that is the transit stops are more important than proximity to a school. I don't know if that's, you know.
School is a bigger one.
Um, right. It, it captures more, you know, if you're further away from the school, it captures more, but you know, I don't know if, if having those differences in distance, uh, um, you know, I don't know if a school and transit stop are of equal priority. Now, in this, they both score five points, so in this scheme they do. But I would, I, I would say you could break that out just by distance from every one of these and go from there. On the third category, the crash history, as I point out in my, um, email to the commissioners, projects, or I mean, crashes happen often because people are impaired. They're, they're impaired due to medical condition, they're impaired because they had a few drinks at the tavern, they're impaired because they didn't take their medication or took too much of their medication. And there's not much an infrastructure plan can do to account for that. But this ranking scheme scores that as the heaviest factor because you can get up to 12 points. And it's, it's just not clear to me that that's the right way to do that. I do agree that if there's a fatality and the infrastructure shortcoming contributed to the fatality, that needs to be fixed right away. And I would say that, that's a high, high priority, one or 1A. But when you don't know for sure what caused an accident or a fatality, and you certainly don't, you may not know the contribution of the, of the vehicle driver or the pedestrian or the bicyclist, giving that a lot of points in the scoring scheme seems problematic to me. I've, I've spoken for a long time and I'm, I'm done, sir.
Because we, I want to get on to the bicycle thing.
Yes, I'm, I'm done. Thank you, sir.
Do you want to give us, I mean, Mike's kind of presented some of the stuff, you've had time to read some of his stuff, we've talked about some of these things. Do you want to just summarize kind of where you think we should go in terms of movement or do you want to do the bike one and then?
First, do the bicycle one. I mean, I think the study session is to kind of, you.
Yeah, okay.
And then, I mean, I really.
That discussion should probably happen.
You want to do it again at a commission? Okay.
Right. That's what I would say. I mean, this gives us the primer, frame of the pump to kind of wrap it around our brains.
Okay. Um, so if we go to the bikeway infrastructure.
Because we only have five point five of the 11.
Yes, yeah. No, and recognizing you're not making decisions about where we go, but if there's something different you want us to present to you at that meeting, it'd be good to know if we need to work on anything else.
My intent for today is get all the information in and I mean, I appreciate your stuff, but I just want to get it all crammed.
Okay. So bikeway prioritization looks again at adopted plan priorities. What we gave you though, so far on, in the draft output was only the pedestrian, or the pedestrian bicycle issues task force priorities, um, which they had a priority network. Um, and so we, from that priority network, we took off places where it was already built with either bike lane or shared use path and then left the remaining sections of basically unbuilt priority network. So Mike has shown the green is the priority network, places where there weren't bike lanes or shared use path are the remaining red, orange, and yellow segments. So that's what you're looking at here when we talk about this. So adopted plan priorities is what we fed into the model. Bicycle, um, we have this bicycle demand model which we updated from our countywide bikeway plan, the bicycle demand model which hopes to calculate latent demand of bicycling with the intention basically to, to assess that demand will be higher where housing density is higher, where there's school and university destinations, and where there's existing infrastructure connections. So it uses those in a matrix and you can kind of see, uh, the scale then is broken down, um, into some categories that are, five categories that are given points, um, kind of based, you can see on the image that Mike, Micah has shown now. And then the last one again is the same safety considerations that we use for pedestrian but for bike, whether it has a bicycle related crash history, roadway volume, and then the crossings which more, aren't included in this, but then could be a few RAN projects that were crossing improvements through the model in the future.
So one thing that just jumps out at me and I'm just asking a question, there's no, nothing in north Lawrence. Is that just because they were hit with the pedestrian stuff or?
No, that is literally because the priority network, the lines we fed into the model at this point, didn't have infrastructure proposed there as part of a priority network. That we could have, we could put in here the whole bikeway plan. Um, we're working, we're, um, working on a scope of work for next year, the NPO is, to update the bikeway plan. So this is use the ped bike issues task force recommendations in the short term eventually to program in an entire bikeway plan. The reason why we didn't put the bikeway plan in this in its entirety, um, is because we've just heard community sentiment at this point that some of the elements proposed in the bikeway plan, like bike routes, which would be signing a street, isn't an appropriate, high level appropriate infrastructure type. So we didn't feel like you would maybe want to consider with bike ped standalone money just signing a bike route. And a lot of the infrastructure proposed in that plan is less, um, separated, it's more either lanes or signage. So just because of that so far, we just started with this to kind of show you where those priorities would lie. Um, of course, whatever we feed into this, that's up for your consideration, but you're right, there are a lot of areas that you also look at this, it's going to be very, you can tell in the western part of town where we have a bunch of the priority network already established through shared use path, there's not much remaining in terms of what shows up, um, you know, in terms of spatial equity and, and distribution of infrastructure. So that would be something that we would need to consider if that's, you know, to build out a priority network, if that's how you envision that, then what types of things need to be included in what you're feeding into the model.
So when, I was just looking here at some of the Lawrence Loop sections and, um, one of the sections is rated really low, goes up by Veritas, for example. Does that schools K-12 layer, layer take into account private schools?
Um, yes. In bikeway demand.
Yeah, definitely. Let's see that. Number 35.
Oh, yeah, because bikeway demand points is four, so.
Yeah.
Jessica, it looks like project 31 goes immediately adjacent to Veritas, you decide.
Yeah.
Yes. And of course, at this point in time, that's the bikeway, the layer that they had, that the ped bike issues task force had determined for bikeway priorities. We, we know right now we're engaging in a loop alignment study. So some of that lines drawn on here are just what they identified as the priority network. That section that goes down Second Street, North Iowa, that might change as part of what we identify as the loop and then.
That's why I was confused, because it uses the same designations we did.
Yes. So for now, for now, all we've put in there is what was previously identified by the task force as their priority network.
Right. And that'll be updated based on the findings of the.
Well, I don't know that we'll automatically update that, but I would assume then if they put that as a priority, they put it there because it was on the Lawrence Loop. And if the loop alignment gets proposed to change, then it would be, it would be safe to probably assume that, but.
Um, I think that we, I think, so are you talking about?
I'm literally talking, so like this, for example, that orange line there, which is up, which is North Iowa and Second Street from the end of Sanders Shaw. That was included because that has what is, was in the bikeway plan was initially used to connect the, the Lawrence Loop.
Right.
But we're studying that now to determine what final alignment. So I think the intention would be, is whatever alignment we end up with, that's what we would feed into the model.
We had a lot of discussions, so there were about five or six of us that sat down and sort of hashed this out over two or three days. And specifically what I remember of that little piece, that's near Woody Park, does that piece near Woody Park?
There's a section of it, yeah.
Yeah. And then the one that shows as 10, the alignment of the Lawrence Loop, those were, um, I think put in there, not because it was like ideal where they should go, I don't really think it is, but I haven't actually gone there to check this, you know. But it was after talking to people from the city that knew a little more, more about it, I mean, part of the factors of why we, we kind of stuck those two somewhere was because like on number 10, the city owns some of that land along the, what is that, I-70? Um, and so there were actually some reasons that we were, we don't, we didn't say, oh, this is the perfect spot for it, or like, I, I don't really know, but we need a loop.
Isn't that actually, I went up that way. Avoids the big hill, basically, I'm on a freeway. And so.
Where?
Actually, uh, the one, the section that goes along the turnpike.
Avoids the big hill.
Uh-huh. On a freeway, so.
Yeah.
You know, that's not part of our, our deal, but I think there's probably some reasoning that got put up there that way.
Well, I argued that, I mean, it goes along I-70 and nobody really loves biking along the highway, so I always argued, is that Lawrence? No, that's not it. Uh, it's sort of where Lawrence Nature Park is and all that. I thought it would be great to see it go through there in that area, but then I never. But then I never, that was just because I thought, well, when you're riding, you want to sort of enjoy. But I never checked out.
Yeah, right back there. It's, it's not bad.
Which one?
The one that runs along I-70. It's set back pretty far and there's a long green in there.
Yeah, yeah.
There's actually kind of a walking trail back there.
Uh huh, yeah. So those were just, when we talked about this, it was just, we didn't know where they should go. So we were just trying to make a, a loop that seemed to sort of work.
I'm going to ask a question that's just boggling my mind. And it's a little bit easier to see on the bike map versus the pedestrian one. But like, we have a map number that's kind of in this, like a number on pedestrians. It's one through 200 and something. On here, it's one through, I don't know, 30 or 40 or something like that. That is not a ranking order.
No, those are literally identificat-
Okay, I'm just making sure because like I'm like, why is it number two, like a number one orange and?
These are all segment IDs.
I mean, is there any way to, I mean, I see the ranking over there, but I'm, in the public view.
I mean, we can just take that number off and show the score. But then the challenge becomes how you label that to the list.
Right. I'm just asking because I'm like, well, shouldn't number one be the highest priority? Where is number one at?
Yeah, they're, they're map numbers. I don't know if you can do like a A1, A2.
Or score or something.
Yeah, something that throws it off versus.
I'm just saying, if number one's not the highest ranked one, I would not.
Or just start at 100? I mean, start at something that's not, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know the answer, but I'm like, whoa.
It's a public document. Yeah, you got to change that.
So then the challenge has begun. You want us to lay, like with the street one, there's a lot more, right? So it's like, maybe we just start at 100 or?
I mean, I like being able to find where the, because like with the pedestrian one, I'm like, I'm looking for number blah, blah, blah. And it, there's just not enough detail to see on it. This one's a little bit easier, but now I can see like number one is orange, but a higher priority is 13 or 30.
Yeah. And we understand that in access data, getting so many factors.
I'm just saying, and then also on the bike one, we call it FID, which I don't know what that means versus the map number. Think consistency or whatever, if it goes away, it's easier. And just, I don't know what it is.
As far as the prioritization criteria, I guess, you know, we have item one, item two, and item three. I guess I'm a little concerned that item three could drive a ranking that may or may not be actually what we want. And I don't know how to necessarily address that. I think, I think the roadway volume is a factor that can be factored in there. But I'm concerned that if, if just because it's a crash, whatever the cause, it hasn't been analyzed, I think, is you just process the data.
I think, I guess kind of just to tell the thing, any of the safety crashes. I think before it comes to you, we would investigate what the issue is. And if it was an impaired driver that clearly was running from the bar or something and, you know, it wasn't anything to do, we would let people know. And how would the score here, I think these would be purely, I had, I don't want to say avoid that too, but something that.
That's not how the model is currently built. That requires a lot of manual work. So if you're committing to that manual work, then that's fine. But Micah is committing to, I've identified the crashes, here's the proximity to the model. So if you don't want to do that and you want to do it later, then that's something completely different.
And it's bicycle crashes, not car crashes.
If you guys are going to recommend something to staff or staff's going to recommend something to you, we'll provide that information, how the crashes happened.
Sure, but.
Yes, yeah. But I'm saying for them, just to do the output, this is all automated in GIS where you put in the data, it either, and it puts out an output. There's no manual part in it until you get to the later, either before or after. The other option is Chuck, is you do this before, which is like the crash analysis that we're doing now. And you identify a location and you identify a road, you know, a geometric deficiency. And then you propose a project. Well, then that project gets fed into the matrix. And gets scored based on your prioritization.
If automated like that, that would pull out the ones you need to look at versus looking at every single one.
Right. But I don't, I don't necessarily want to show up in the model to say, okay, this one's way up here, even though the three unrelated crashes, whatever. And so I guess I'm, I'm concerned that, that we put too much emphasis on chance happening. I mean, realistically, there could be a crash at any given intersection. And so is that a valid scoring concern? I mean, I would, I would say you're, you're probably more likely to have a crash in a, where the roadway vehicle volume is higher versus just some random place that completely throws off our deal. So my thought is we get rid of crash history and use that as another factor, but not as in the score.
It could be skewed also in the sense that longer segments have a higher chance of having, experiencing crash history because they have more area.
Right, right.
Just probability wise.
I was saying, the board at the group needs to determine whether you want to include that or not.
But right now, what's happening is the query is set up that any bicycle accident that is pulled.
That's made it to reports that you guys have because that's the other factors. Not all of the reports end up in that system.
It would be only crashes data reported to KDOT through the Kansas Motor Vehicle Accident Report Form. It does not include, for example, like the Bob Frederick's incident or other incidences where it's just the bicycle and there's not a vehicle involved or two bicyclists, those don't get reported. KDOT only reports instances of bicycle with car.
What about the pedestrian?
Pedestrian is the same. So pedestrian would be, like if there's pedestrian and bike, it wouldn't be included. It's only pedestrian with cars. So any type of tripping has, you know, tripping or any type of other speed stuff, it's not going to be.
So again, this goes to, this is a tool. It is not good.
We know there are limitations to the data.
It's not going to count for every tripping hazard. It's not going to count for, what was the cause of the accident? It's a tool.
What's your guys' thoughts on the safety issue, crashes, using crashes in the model?
I think you need it for screening, but I question pedestrian one. Where, okay, you've got a pedestrian accident somewhere in the, in there. Does the sidewalk you're proposing have anything to do with that? It seems you'd have to pull up, you had my, on that first one, 12. You have to pull up each of those and make sure. A sidewalk you're proposing, because it could be a crossing or some other issue, that's germane.
We, we had a heat map we looked at just that showed crashes for bicycle. I thought we had one for pedestrians too. I guess, maybe that would be.
We did, but the, the stuff that we have is from T-2040, from the previous plan. So it's pretty outdated. What's in this data report is 13 through 16, 13 through 2016. We can make one, but I was just going to look just to show you this, for example, which is, it didn't show up on all your printouts because it didn't, it did something funky. But you can see where the, which ones got crash points based on that. So you could see how kind of those scores, if you take 12 away from those scores, those projects now fall underneath, you know, that one was that second round of projects.
Right. And so, yeah, do we, do we actually just have a separate model or separate screening mechanism that just says, here's where we had crashes in the past three years? And, and then look at that in conjunction with this?
Like we would use the output of, of the crash work that we're doing. We would use, could use the output of that, which is kind of a hotspot analysis from three years of data. And then you'd have that, like a, like a map underneath your segments, but there'd be no points.
Right. I think that would be more useful to, to know where the crashes were, but not let it affect the, the scoring mechanism.
Well, and I think it's definitely important, like what Chuck said, that the crash history is probably going to more impact. I mean, it might alert you to a priority destination. But more or less than anything, it's going to impact design because you want to make sure whatever, if you're actually designing and building something there, that it, if there was some sort of deficiency, that it's addressing that. So it comes maybe after.
You're trying to build a project that can address a deficiency that caused crash.
I guess my only concern of stripping out what I see here on here. So if you strip out the crash data, it just flattens everything.
Right.
All of a sudden, everything's the same score.
Yeah.
Or, or maybe you make it less points. I mean, again, the points are somewhat arbitrary, but they're weighting, they're applying a weighting to those, those items.
And another thing that might not be in here is that since I'm working with the geometry sense points and lines, I had to make a proximity distance, so within 85 feet of the proposed line project. So road may be near, maybe not, or exit may be near the proposed project, but along a different road even, it could be added into the. But since the points aren't exactly on the projects that I'm fitting in, I had to kind of expand that out to grab it.
Right. I think that, I mean, the idea of having that heat map as a base layer, be able to not, you know, not the crashes incorporated to the score. Then we can kind of take a look at everything without the crash data as it's ranked and compare it to that heat map and say, okay, well, something's going on here. What do we need to look into in terms of what types of crashes and where they happened? So it's not, especially with that information, like if it's going to skew it to a point where there might not even been crashes on that line, but somewhere nearby.
I mean, heat map too, so you're just going to, I mean, you're still going to have.
But then, but at least we get to see, okay, well, there's a place that we need to dig into the data a little bit more and find out what happened.
And that also uses traffic flow on that heat map, right?
Yeah.
So it'd be kind of doubling up of. If you're going to pass this as a policy, how do you include the heat map? Because it's kind of a black box.
Well, the policy again is just a ranking. We make.
Oh, no, no. Chuck's talking about pass, this going to the commission, becoming an ordinance.
Well, a policy, yeah, just a, it's a policy.
I would think, you consider crash heat, I mean, you consider crash density when it becomes a condition of something you consider, either when you're choosing projects to feed in or when you're.
Point two, file two in your criteria. Do you reference the URS map at one point in time?
Yeah, I mean, I, this, part of that process, I think, is this gets done on an annual. I mean, you add projects, but basically the scoring and rerunning the model happens then annually as you look at some of the out, you know what I mean, your, your first two years, your hard program, 90% program.
I'm going to see that as a staff tool.
Yeah. Oh, if it's a policy.
To policy, but that is your criteria. Because you've got to describe the criteria in the ordinance.
Well, possibly it's not a criteria, but it's this other consideration.
It's a non-scored item right here that just is, is taken on crash reports or whatever. I mean, it's, it's not scored, but it's a part of the policy. Again, that's, that's part of our discretion as a, as a body to make a recommendation, but it, you know.
I like using, technical class, technical, it's a good one. Use that tool.
So what is your guys' schedule to 1:30 or just, I don't know what your, everybody wants to spend, but. Just respecting everybody's time.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I kind of want to know about, more about the crossing score. How's that going to, I had a question that I kind of want to know more about that.
Well, right now, there are no projects that, in terms of, in terms of crossing improvements. So we have lines, right? So we don't necessarily know that the design of the project is going to be a crossing improvement. Right? Possibly, right? But so that would have to, that's like has to be manually entered in terms of you can't just say into like some model thing that it have it or not. So it would need to be like, if it was a specific crossing project that you were feeding into the model, then it could, under this scenario, it could get points because you'd say, we want to propose a crossing at Sixth Street, for example. You know, or your bike ped undercrossing at 19th and Iowa. Then that crossing project, it would get scored on all of these and it would specifically be a crossing project. So it would get those points. But that really falls back to what's fed into the model and how that's decided.
So, did that answer? Well, maybe in a minute.
Okay.
Can I, can I add something to that real quick? So there's not, it wouldn't be a data source that exists right now that just says, here are, where we have, here are points that we have deficient crossings.
No, we have no identified projects for crossings, like where we would say, we need crossing improvements here. That would need to be identified in some process.
Well, that's okay. The thing that made me think about it was, I was looking at some of these and we're talking about crash data and some of it, it's, I mean, I can see why the crash data is kind of an issue. But the one that kind of got my attention was from press line, on Harbor, from press line to, wherever that is, I think it's Iowa, that's what it looks like on this, honestly, two sections.
Mike?
It's, I think this is pedestrian, pedestrian, 145.
Harbor and Iowa? They have a signal there.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's, it's got some crash. The three.
Right. But so is, so is adding, that would be, that would be the question of which is, if, if the project is just adding gap sidewalk, then would it automatically get cross points for improved crossing? Unlikely because it's already a signalized intersection. Unless you build, unless your proposed project there was something grade separated.
And I think that's, I guess where they err and then you're sure where she's going is, to get points for crossing, I think it needs to be grade separated. Because just, or, or a hawk signal or something like that versus just marking crosswalk at an intersection with the signals. I mean, there has to be something that actually increases safety at a crossing. So.
Yes.
That's what that puts the points.
I think we intended it to be that way. So we would want to clarify that, yes.
And maybe there's higher, higher points for underpass or overpass and a lower point for at-grade crossings improvements. Because, I mean, if you look at safety wise, an at-grade or underpass is much safer than, an at-grade, even a hawk signal or something like that. So maybe, maybe a ranking in there for 321 or something.
But let's be really realistic. To change it, at-grade crossings, there's very few projects that we will see in this community. You know, so we don't want to, I guess, give a lot of points or not a lot of points just because the at-grade, the separate grade crossings. Number one, physically, there's probably very few areas that you might be qualified. Two, the cost would be very, very, many, many, many.
Right. And I'm not saying a big separation in points, but it seems to me like there ought to be some difference rather than, than just saying, an at-grade crossing gets the same points as such and such. Because there may be improvements like 19th and Iowa that we'd rank higher because it is an underpass.
Then, and I'm just looking at it from the practice side, if you look at it from the funding side, that may take three years worth of funding in order to do a project like that. So then how do you weigh, if you give it more points for being an underpass or overpass because it's separated, how do you weigh that practical side of it?
Right. And I, and I guess I'm saying that in a project that maybe is already designated as underpass versus one that's not. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying make the decision, I'm saying one that's already designated as like, one of the loop projects goes under, under McDonald Drive. And so, yeah, understanding that's more expensive, but you're not going to make it an above grade crossing in its location. So it's already set up that way. So.
And then the challenge just becomes, how do you feed in those, you know, those projects? And what process do you have to identify?
This identifies some area needs. It doesn't necessarily set the score. There's no, so we need a crossing here, but it doesn't necessarily set the score whether it's separated or not. So I don't know how you can get that in there.
Well, that's, it would have to be fed in as a project. So it would have to say somehow in the design, when you fed in a line or a segment in there, it would have to say, is it's, if it's separated, indicate with a one. And then if it has a one, it gets, or you know, whatever gets the points.
And, and, you know, we don't, we don't want to make this thing too complicated.
I really asked him, but I think my question, no answer. Well, I mean, I, I. I really asked him, but I think my question, my answer. Well, I mean, I, I think that that is really, like, I, I think about adding a sidewalk on that 145 section. I mean, it's, it's a high priority section anyway, and I think it is. But one of the biggest issues, and this is just kind of the lane over there, it's like, it's always been comfortable to walk from that neighborhood to, to Iowa. It's always crossing Iowa that's an issue, right? I live there, and that's, that's where we would walk to get to campus. And just, I guess, I mean, if, if that's the challenge, it's really funding, I guess, is really what...
It's a challenge, you have to enter into the scoring.
Because so many of, this all feels like, it feels like those crossings don't get enough, because, you know, people, bad at our sidewalks are, usually, if you trip on them, it's not fatal. So, so many of our issues come from crossing street. And so it feels like projects will be weighted heavily toward just fixing those sidewalks, which I really think is, is where I want to go first, I think, I guess.
The crossing, the crossing isn't simply safety, it's connected thing?
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's, it feels like this is so focused on, I hate saying that, but, but just preparing sidewalks, or, but I think that's one of the major issues.
Well, it's kind of focused on a route, and the post-necessary connecting some areas.
Yes.
This is a great, this is a great, it might get more benefit out of that.
So should it be somewhere here, if it connects two areas, some points?
We talked about that. Wasn't there a difficulty with the model to do that?
I keep forgetting.
Chuck, our modeler Chuck.
It's really addressed as well, walking within your neighborhood, but not so much walking to the way...
Cross, cross.
Yeah.
But I think that's, that's, again, our, our picture is to say, okay, which project are we going to do today? And we go, oh, well, look, if we do this, that connects the whole thing. Whereas it can't necessarily be modeled, but it's, we're, we're the ones doing that.
Yeah, right.
Again, a tool.
Resuprat, resuprat, did the sample stuff that we showed you in terms of linked segments help you kind of visualize how this tool could help you make decisions in the sense that it at least starts to bring some to the top, where you're starting to, you can now start to argue merits of projects in a logical way as opposed to...
Yes. And when I think about it, when I look at the map and issues I've often seen, I think it does a really good job of addressing some of those. So I, as a tool, I think it'll be very useful so far.
Like the bicycle map, because it has the existing network map on it, is easier to see that. When you're looking at pedestrian, you don't necessarily see...
Do you want to just show what the priority network is?
Where are the safe routes to school, and what's, you know, what, what are the priority pedestrian?
We can add that, we can, it's on here. It's the...
Like that, like that helps me more.
We printed a PDF for you, and of course, if you, if you're familiar or comfortable at all, or have any experience starting to use the GIS version, this is going to be really nice, because we can add in a lot more information in here in terms of, you can turn stuff on and off, and that's public, available. It's a lot of data. But here, that's safe routes to schools, do you have the priority, the, I don't know if the priority network is in there, which is arterials and collectors in addition to that. So be functional class, or be major thoroughfares. I don't think it's on there. Is it? Oh, there you go. Arterial and collector?
I would have to read and not to say.
Okay. Can you just symbolize that, this, like a little bit different than safe routes, but the same?
Yeah, it's, it's purple now.
Okay. Oh, it is purple, okay, that's fine.
So...
It's not color shown.
Yeah.
Another question, or a thought, or, I don't know. I mean, I know, since it's all based on the priority network, like, safety crossing, looks like, this looks like a project that adds crossing improvements on a road over 16,000. Only three points. I'm, I'm serious.
If it's over that, though, it's also going to get the AADT one, and it's also going to be, it's also likely going to at least be an art, a collector, if not an arterial. So it's also going to get points for that. And it also possibly could be safe route.
Right.
So I think, part of that is, yes, it's three in addition to some of these other things.
Maybe just to think about it, or help me think about it for some time, I have trouble picturing in my head, but so the one example would be, or two examples, 21st Street, if it were Bicycle Boulevard, what all would go into those?
Is there any cross in points right now?
Well, none, we have no scores right now, because these are all just line segments. So the, the idea is, we haven't put any crossing projects in here.
So say 21st and Iowa, assuming there would be crossing improvements, which I hope there would be, would have something like that. And then a five for the projects for over 25,000 AADT. And, well, I don't know if there's any, I didn't check the safety. So it might have a pretty high score because of all those.
Would you want to see more? If you get multiple crossings, do you want more points for that? Right now, it's kind of three or nine. So it's like it improves the crossing?
Well, it depends if crossings get put in as separate, you know, like if they get put in, it's like, is this crossing in this segment, or is it the entire segment has multiple crossing? It depends how big you scope projects, probably too. I mean, that's kind of what I was talking about, the consideration that some projects are going to have a higher, higher crash score, that they might, they could, you could do a higher crossing score if it had multiple, and your project was addressing multiple. Although, yeah, those would be pretty big, start to get big projects.
Or for instance, 21st and Iowa may not have a high crash score, or I guess, because nobody would cross there right now in the right line. So it would have a really low crash score, assuming, I mean, actually know there are 50 people crossing there, so...
It's too dangerous, so...
Yeah. So if it's too dangerous, then nobody's crossing there, but then you add these other improvements, it's like it wouldn't...
We have that with, with a lot of things. You know, it's, any signal we put in, you don't, you don't usually have the accidents.
Right.
You don't want the accidents. You try to put it in beforehand, but you can't warn it until you have the accident.
Yeah.
It's the chicken and the egg on every, everything we do.
Yeah. But I guess that's what we're, we're for, right?
And I anticipate that'll be the case as you start to make more and more things connect, you have more and more opportunities to cross. And so then in future years, you start, you develop a process that you add, you can add other priorities and projects to the proposed list.
And don't forget, you know, once a prior policy improves, you know, you see how it works, and you get...
Yeah.
I think the great thing is going to come up, we don't have anything right now, this is a great starting point, and we've started, we revised our traffic code, ranking policy a couple times, you know, just, and new things will come up, new solutions, new programs, new projects.
Maybe new money.
Sort them, look at them, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
I can't resist this, but how does, or how could, like, your annual bike ped counts feed into a model like this to show, like, I know that's not necessarily, it's not fair in terms of, that data's not available for all segments, but maybe that's just another layer that we can evaluate, say, oh, this seems like an area that has a lot of...
We definitely have that available. We get to the chicken and egg again then too, like, just because it has low now, doesn't mean it would have low demand. Demand tries to help answer some of that by addressing kind of where we think there would be latent demand. Another consideration is, when we look at, you know, updating the bikeway plan next year, how we consider data to do that. There are companies that sell user data in terms of volume, like they have a whole, like, you know, the, the mobile, the apps people use to track their routes. They gather all that data, and we got an estimate to purchase that data, and we're considering it. And that's the sort of data we could use to help support the demand model that we're building, and support kind of this idea of where do our networks and alignments need to be in terms of that. And I think it feeds maybe more into that than it does into prioritizing projects. Is that data valuable to you at KU?
I have not ever used it.
Okay.
So essentially, Strava Heat Map that you're selling you, but that's somewhat loaded by the people who don't use Strava.
So they've done some, they've done some studies that basically, and we've read into some of the research, because of course, you've questioned the data, is it better than nothing? You know, there's other questions you have to consider, but they've actually shown that it, in some places where they did some analysis of the data, that it does represent 5 to 10% of bicycle users, and that oftentimes, people are looking for, regardless of why you cycle, if you're trying to get to a route for recreation, you're still trying to find safe routes. And so it helps you, it still can help you identify that. I mean, obviously, you have to take the caveat into consideration about that, who's using it and for what types of trips.
Sure. But yeah, whether you're going here or there, you still have to use the same route, so that makes sense.
I've got another meeting to get to, so I gotta leave. But my thought is, this has been a PA schedule for a regular agenda meeting to, I mean, direct staff, but I mean, I think this is a huge step forward in where we've been, so...
I imagine you'll have a meeting to talk about it. We'll, we can revise some stuff in terms of policy, what it would look like, and bring some, bring that back to you, to commission meeting, and then...
I mean, there's tweaks that we've talked about that I don't think you really need direction from us to show that you've heard that.
Sure.
I mean, we'll act definitely on this at a regular scheduled meeting.
Just trying to have any input, is he still there?
I heard some more.
I think he had a meeting at the end part, so he was going to only be able to join us for a short time, so I'm sure he'll call us.
Did you formally adjourn this meeting?
No, we just, we're just done, yeah.
Just a reminder, open house meeting Monday night for Lawrence Sleet, and it'll be basically the same as the survey, so make sure you're ready to take the survey at the meeting.
Thank you everyone.